They're flying and making budget.
Well, I did this when I was an alderman out there.
We're gonna get started. Okay. Okay. Okay.
I'd like to call the September 24th County Council meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mike Ehlum will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and Major Ron Key will lead us in prayer. He's with the Salvation Army.
All right, let's pray. Lord, we just come to you tonight. We just thank you for this time of meeting together to better our community. Lord, we pray for each of these councilmen, Lord, who are sitting here amongst us. Lord, as they make the decisions that affect us all, Lord, and we pray you'll give them the guidance and the direction that they need. Lord, we just pray for each person that's here tonight, either to speak or to present or is just here. Lord, we pray you'll bless our time. Pray these things your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Thank you. Next item is a public presentation on manufacturing day and recognition by Scott Drosnik. Scott, if you will.
I'm gonna go first.
Okay.
I will go ahead and read the proclamation and then Scott has some additional information and some special guests that I'm sure he will want to recognize. Whereas advanced manufacturing accounts for the largest amount of payroll in St. Charles County with more than $1 billion in annual total wages and approximately 12% of local jobs. And whereas the National Manufacturing Day has been celebrated every October for the past six years in St. Charles County to inspire the next generation of manufacturers and dispel common misperceptions about manufacturing. And whereas Manufacturing Day 2018 events are planned for Tuesday, October 2nd at St. Charles Community College and for Friday, October 5th at Rankin Technical College, Wentzville, in partnership with manufacturers around the country. And whereas Manufacturing Day 2018 in St. Charles County when involved an estimated 1,000 middle and high school students from around the St. Louis region touring 15 local production facilities and engaging with approximately 30 local manufacturers through hands-on exhibits and special presentations. And whereas the Fort Zumalt School District has been engaging in preparing St. Charles County students for manufacturing and technical career opportunities through the Engineering and Industrial Technology Program since 1963. And whereas the Fort Zumalt School District's Engineering and Industrial Technology Program successfully serves nearly 1,800 high school students every year through hands-on courses in drafting, engineering, metals, woods, and media technology. And whereas St. Charles County Government salutes Fort Zumalt School District for their 55 years of offering shop classes, that's what I used to call it, in helping the future workforce receive dedicated training to prepare them for career pathways in advanced manufacturing, technical, and trade skill opportunities. And whereas St. Charles County Government and our Workforce and Business Development Department are proud to collaborate with the Fort Zumalt School District and all public school districts in our community along with the St. Charles Community College, Lewis and Clark Career Center, Rankin Technical College, Wentzville, O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce and Industries, Greater St. Charles County Chamber of Commerce, City of O'Fallon, EDC Business and Community Partners, and many others in celebrating Manufacturing Day 2018 in St. Charles County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Steve Vellman, St. Charles County Executive, urge our citizens, business leaders, community groups, and elected officials to join in recognizing Fort Zumalt School District's Engineering and Industrial Technology Program and hereby encourages all in our community to support and take part in celebrating Manufacturing Day events in St. Charles County planned for Tuesday, October 2nd and Friday, October 5th, 2018.
Scott?
Steve. All I can say at this point is we've got a quick video, so a lot of pictures to go with a lot of the words. If James and everybody can roll it real quick, this is the program from Fort Zumalt. As our honorary, honorary, excuse me, honorable county executive has pointed out, we've got Manufacturing Day 2018 coming up, so we're not only celebrating that, but we always like to recognize someone, some organization, some individual, some business that is putting that in practice. And so this year, we wanted to honor the Fort Zumalt program that's been going on since 1963. And without any further ado, three special guests I'd like to introduce if I could. Dr. Dubre, Superintendent, Fort Zumalt School District. Pat Brown, who is the STEM and Career Coordinator for the School District, and Andy McCaffey, who is the Curriculum Coordinator for the Engineering and Industrial Technology Program. If you gentlemen would like to come up for a second.
Do you like to say a few words?
No, not really.
Well, then we're gonna go up here for a little photo.
Okay.
Okay. By the way, I'm not the honorary. Honorable. Honorable. I'm a little gentleman. Sorry to get you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our schools do such a great job in this county. It's always a pleasure when we have an opportunity to recognize the good work that they do. And it's very important to the future of this county that they keep up the good work. So congratulations to Fort Zumalt.
I guess I was lucky. We had a really good industrial arts program at where I went to high school and I did the architectural and mechanical drawing and metal shop and wood shop. And I think it helped to get for me to later on in my career, all the things I learned back then. So thanks for still having those kind of programs.
I'd like to say, I think it's very important that you teach kids how to work with their hands. It seems like a lost art, like in construction, carpentry, things like that. And I'm glad to see that you guys are doing that and the other schools are doing that because it's very important not to lose our trades in the country. It's, I'm in construction, I have been a long time, and it's seemed like it's getting harder and harder to find workers, young workers. And all of our, all of our foremen and stuff are getting aging and getting older and there's like no young workers anymore. It's really becoming a problem.
Anybody else?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public hearing on setting the 2018 tax rates. Do we have anybody to comment on the public hearing?
He has. Go ahead.
Tax rate.
Do you have any speakers?
No speaker card on the tax rate.
Mr. Dean Hoff, did you have a comment on tax rates?
Thank you very much, members of the County Council. Arnie A.C. Deanhoff, public advocate and resident. And as we talked about at the last meeting, putting the ordinance or reading the ordinance before the public hearing was putting the cart before the horse. It's in violation after discussions with the State Auditor's Office. The public hearing should be held first before the first reading of the ordinance for the tax levy. And as we talked at the last meeting, the Director of Finance commented that, I guess, basically with the Director of Administration, there'd be a zero out because of our sales tax growth and our growth in our population. However, I'd like the County Council to look at some of the other funds that you raise tax levies on, such as the road fund, the health fund, and the capital improvements fund. And I think there's one other fund that I'm missing. But I think you need to be cognizant of not raising funds. Our county is growing at immense paces. We are one of the fastest-growing counties in the country and definitely across the state of Missouri. Our population is over 425,000 residents. We have this year alone close to 3,000 new county residents, which translates into a building boom with our residential and also the commercial growth of buildings. So our new property taxes that go online one month after occupancy, either commercially or residential, we've gone up to the $300 million mark this year in 2018 of new construction for residential and commercial, which translates into new taxes. Now, because of the Hancock Amendment of the state constitution, and we had a reassessment year last year, you need to bring those co-signments. And I don't know if it's the Director of Finance or the County Auditor that's responsible for setting the tax rate, but because of our growth population, we're having a lot more income of revenues. And so for that reason, I ask that you set the tax levy for the other funds besides the general fund at zero, that you set those at something that's reasonable for county residents to live with. You need to live within a budget like we live in a budget countywide. And I gotta tell you, along the Missouri River right here, there's not trees that keep growing and producing $100 bills that every time you want to do a project, you just go out the back door and get $100 bills. So be cognizant of the residents and set the tax rate accordingly and set it at a reasonable rate, not the maximum rate that's allowed by law. Thank you.
Any other speakers on that topic? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing for setting the sales tax and move on to public comments. Are there any speakers tonight for public comments?
We have another vacating the portion of Old South River Road public hearing.
I'm sorry. Is there anybody to speak on the vacating portion of the Old South River Road?
Hello, my name is Jeff Moon. I'm with Vax Engineering here to represent Harris House, who is the property owner adjacent to this proposed right-of-way vacation. I just want to explain a few things. Hopefully you guys can see my drawing here, so it'll give you an idea of the area we propose to be vacated. This is what we term excess right-of-way along Arena Parkway. It used to be Old South River Road here, and it had been up until earlier this year, two separate parcels. So that's why it had to remain public to allow access to each property. Currently, Harris House has bought both of those lots, so it is one property. So we are requesting vacation of this excess right-of-way, which will allow us to maintain the frontage along their new development, to landscape it and beautify it, and to help control access to their property. So just answer any questions you guys might have.
Anybody have any questions? Sounds pretty simple.
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. This was, this portion that's being vacated is what I understand is part of Old Highway 94, the old highway that went through, passed this property. It's only used as a lane at this time, so it makes sense to vacate it and let them use it.
Okay. Will they come forward as an ordinance at a later point or?
Yes.
What happens next? Okay. When it does, hopefully we have better graphics that we can work from. This is difficult.
There's one in the document, and with the ordinance, there's another one.
Any other speakers on this comment or want to comment on this? Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna speak. That was Old Upper Bottom Road.
Yeah. That makes more sense. Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that and open up general public comments. We'll allow three speakers on each topic or six speakers, either for or against and for each topic. So we have any speakers tonight?
First speaker would be Doug Teeman.
Good evening. My name's Doug Teeman. I'm an engineer with Pickett Ray &amp; Silver. I'm before you tonight to talk about bill number 4635, which is the rezoning on a parcel of land on Highway N. In your packets or also on your desk, you should have received revised plans that were also posted. We included a rendering of the building. We also included the building which we have flipped at the request of the property owner that was adjacent to this property. He requested us to flip the building in the parking lot. We have done that. We have done what the adjacent property owner had asked, and we had flipped the building, so we put the building closer to his resident, his parcel, and the parking lot further away from his parcel. He had also asked for a berm on the property, so we have added a berm on the east, the south, and the west side. There's no berm on the front adjacent to Highway N, but we've added the berm around the perimeter of that. We've also put landscaping on that berm, and we've submitted a landscaping plan as part of the packet. We also included a letter from MoDOT which said that the proposed entrance was feasible. And we've also talked to Sandy Mae, and Sandy Mae has approved, gave us a tentative approval on the septic system. And I would just like to say, this is a case that falls within the ordinance of the county. We're not asking for any kind of a variance on the septic system. It does have a specific ordinance code that allows this type of development on less than three acres when it's a lot that was put together, that was there, and doesn't have a way to get service. It was not created. These were two lots that were actually combining. So what we've done is we've answered or we've done what the resident next to us has asked us to do from the last meeting. We're definitely open to any other suggestions. Later, I'm gonna have Greg come up and talk a little bit about the building and landscaping.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
Any other speakers on this topic?
Next speaker would be Kevin Carroll.
I appreciate all the changes that they have made, but now they've added a berm around this. Now, this building is, he didn't say how tall the building was gonna be. We were told it's gonna be like 22 to 24 feet tall. Now, is there any way that we can get shrubbery or something down the side of, on this berm that we will not see it from our subdivision? You know, because when we're coming out and in and out of our subdivision, we're gonna see this massive, well, I take it it's a metal building. You know, there hasn't been anything said about that. You know, we have two metal buildings down the road, and you know, they don't look the greatest, you know. You know, that's, I had some other concerns, but evidently Sandy Mae gave them an approval for the septic system. You know, I'll be back for other issues on that topic later on. But you know, that's, I would like a berm high enough to where we cannot see it from our subdivision. Thank you.
Any other comments on that topic?
Next one's Greg Ansel.
Good evening. I'm Greg Ansel with Echelon Constructors. The building itself is approximately 20 to 22 feet tall, and the reason for that height is because it is a gymnastics facility. And first and foremost, we're looking out, and the client is looking out for the safety of the kids. They have clientele anywhere from 18 months old to 18 years old, and these kids are typically only there, for the most part, between 4:00 in the evening to about 9:00 in the evening. So it's not like this facility is being used for an extensive period of time through the course of the day. The exterior skin of this building, because it was questioned about it looking like a metal building, we had gone back and did a redesign where we have a split-face four-by-eight block on the bottom as a wainscot. And then we have intermittently set up where we have two different colors of hardy board, where the top is accented with a darker color. In between that, we do have the vertical panel, metal panels. So we're trying to use a combination of multiple materials to work together. If we were to just blanket, make it a hardy board look, it's, I don't think it would fit with the area. And if we were, it was all metal building looking, I agree. It needed some kind of accenting, and that's why we believe the block at the bottom. And it's, and one thing I want to point out is the block is not a typical eight-by-16. It is gonna be a four-by-eight to give it a more modular brick, large jumbo brick look. As far as the landscaping goes, we did, we did include a berm along the residence side and along the adjacent rear of the building. That berm we're figuring is approximately two feet. We did that by design. We understand that it was requested that it be six foot tall. Well, we looked at, what are the advantages and disadvantages of that for the surrounding properties? When you're dealing with a six-foot-high berm, that means in order to maintain that berm, by code, it has to be at a three-to-one slope. The top of the berm needs to be probably six feet wide to be able to get a zero-turn mower over it or whatever, riding mower. So it can't be just built at a peak. Well, to do that and to take the three-to-one slope into account, now you're dealing with a berm that's 42 feet wide. That's just not realistic in bringing that around the perimeter of this piece of property. The other thing you have to think about is, on the backside of the property, we're responsible for the water that's being shut off that berm. Well, we have to have a swale there. Well, that's gonna take up another four feet. Well, the real estate really isn't there. So we even went one step further. We said, hey, what do we have to do to shove the building a little bit to, I believe it's the north? Is that correct, Stephen? If we shove the building?
Sir, we may ask you to come back up when we get to this bill, but your time's up on public comment and will it?
Well, if you got any more questions?
Definitely hang around.
Sure.
Yeah.
Next speaker is John Adams.
How do you do? I live in number one Falling Leaf Drive. I'm taxed right now at about a $400,000 assessment, and so that's a decent-sized house for St. Charles County. And I think just a metal, big square building next to me is making things rough, you know. I think they could put a six-foot berm in, fill it with bamboo. I don't care. They don't have to cut the grass, just fill it so we don't see it. And I'm from Wild Horse Creek Road, and over there, we didn't have these problems, and they still don't have these problems. And it's because of the responsibility on everybody's part to make sure that we don't have metal sports barns flopping up everywhere. But if we can have a six-foot berm, just fill it with bamboo, and I don't care if they cut it or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Paul Battaglia.
Councilman, my name is Paul Battaglia. I'm the owner of High Energy Gymnastics. The improvements to the building, I'm very pleased with them because as the owner, I do want an aesthetically pleasing building. We take a great deal of pride in the cleanliness of our building because my two and four-year-old and all the children that are coming in deserve to have a clean place to play and grow. I want to reiterate that we too want to be good neighbors to everybody in the surrounding area, and it is our intent that 90% of our clientele will come from a very small radius, and we want to be part of the community. I really don't have anything else, much else to say. There's been some questions about the ceiling height. We do work with athletes from 18 months to 18 years, and trampolines are 50 inches off the floor, and they require a certain ceiling height. Our ring tower is 19/6 for men's gymnastics, and so we do have certain requirements that we have to maintain to ensure the safety of the athlete, for the older athletes. All right. Thank you again for considering our project.
Thank you.
The next, the last speaker card is Arnie A.C. Deanhoff.
Thank you, members of the County Council. Arnie C. A.C. Deanhoff, public advocate and resident. First of all, I'm opposed to bill 4635, the Highway N Gymnastics Center. It will dwarf the subdivision next door being less than 57 feet from a home, and it's a $400,000 home, as we just heard. Smaller or larger lots have been turned down by Sandy Mae for having a septic system. This will open up a can of worms countywide on these type of lots, and I don't think we want to set that bar that low and that, and have that type of health issues in our county. It will cause a differential in an open door for anybody to put any type of building or leach egg septic system. It will open up the door of our codified county code. And of course, it will decrease property values of the adjoining neighborhood. So I ask that you vote no. Why, at the workshop, you were on the topic of spending money and asking Ms. George to look into technology issues. I'd like to bring up a couple of technology issues for the residents that you serve. Presentation device by the resident speaker, I think that we need to have something that's more user-friendly and more easier to residents to bring up pictures, to show diagrams, to show maps. So not only should you be important, but us, 425,000 county, 1,000 county residents should be important. And also a time clock, I think, is necessary, such as the city of Wentzville or other communities where they allow you to speak five minutes, there should be a time clock. And resident comments should be endured and enjoyed by the County Council, not shunned as the county chair enjoys cutting off, enjoys showing the power, and not really caring what residents have to say, but cutting residents off at the hip when the three-minute buzzer goes off. So I'd like to see the County Council look at a rule of moving the county comment period from three to five minutes. Treat us as dignified citizens and human beings, and let us get our ideas and suggestions because guess what? I bleed and care about St. Charles County, just like Steve Vellman does. I bleed and care about St. Charles County, just like Steve Velman does and every one of you. You know, when I come up here and speak, I feel that no one in the administration even cares or listens, even our $190,000 county administrator. I think they go on death ears. I don't really think that the county council cares what residents have to say. It comes down to greed in your pockets, your pension, your county salary of $17,500, your county pension and medical benefits. But I think it's important that you start heeding the advice of county residents because you certainly didn't listen to the 35,000 signatures on a smoking, clean indoor air act. But yet, you want to do political stunts, like in our, you know, you call out for a professional police department, but then you promote an officer, Chris Hunt, who was in trouble with the law, charged with felonies, and the county had to pay out $80,000 in civil rights and constitutional violations. But yet, you move him to a-
Your time's up, Mr. Deanhoff.
Thank you, and it's Deanhoff without an H.
Any other comments? Thank you. We'll close public hearing, or public comments. Oral report from the county exec. Do we have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion for approval is submitted.
Second.
I got a motion. Did you have a comment, John?
I had a comment. I just want to comment on the appointees for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, William Klein, Ruth Mellor, and Robert Waller. These folks have served on the park board for several terms or several years. They're dedicated, and I just want to commend them for doing it again. We appreciate their service.
Well, thank you. I think we appreciate anybody that serves on any of the committees or boards throughout the county, and it's greatly appreciated. I got a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is bills for final passage.
Actually, it's resolutions.
Oh, resolutions. I almost skipped over that. Resolution number 1810.
Resolution number 1810, sponsored by John White. A resolution appointing Larry Osman to the Board of Trustees of the Greens Bottom Levy District Number 2.
Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none.
A resolution appointing Larry Osman to the Board of Trustees of the Greens Bottom Levy District Number 2. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Okay. Next is resolution 1811.
Resolution number 1811, sponsored by Joe Brazel. A resolution reappointing Ron Bearbaum to the Board of Trustees of the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District. Whereas pursuant to the St. Charles County Charter, Article 10, Section 10.608, the county council passed Resolution 02-09, establishing a Board of Trustees for the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District, and appointing 3 residents of the district, namely Leonard Nadler, Tom Kessler, and Ted Struckoff, as its first members for the terms stated therein. And whereas the Resolution 04-09, 06-03, 06-08, 07-10, 08-13, 09-08, 10-11, 11-08, 12-08, 13-08, 14-07, 15-05, 16-05, and 17-08, the county council has since reappointed or appointed district residents to the board, and its current members are Tom Kessler, Ted Struckoff, and Ron Bearbaum. And whereas because Ron Bearbaum's term expired on August 25, 2018, the council seeks to reappoint him to a new 3-year term beginning August 26, 2018. Now therefore, be resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council makes the following appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District, Ron Bearbaum to a 3-year term beginning August 26, 2018.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
A resolution reappointing Ron Bearbaum to the Board of Trustees of the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
That passes. Moving on to bills for final passage. The first bill is Bill Number 4634.
Bill Number 4634, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to RR, single-family residential district, as per application, RZ18-07.
Any comments or questions on this bill?
I'd just make a quick comment on it. This is 16 acres, asking for a 3-acre lot size zoning, so lots, they want to make 3-acre lots. And sometimes a conversation comes up that we have 5-acre minimums, but just so everybody understands, this is fairly close to Wentzville. And so, the farther east you get in the southwest area, you want to give them the 3-acre zoning because it's more congruent to that area. But when we get past D is when more people are thinking the 5-acre, because there's a lot less 3-acre, there's mostly 5-acre and up subdivisions. So just so you understand a train of thought, so when you say, well, we just passed a 3-acre subdivision, that's why, because this is much closer to dire road, which is Wentzville. And so, the more 3-acre lots we have out there, so to speak, blocks the municipalities from Anixon into the unincorporated area.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, would you please read and call a roll?
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to RR, single-family residential district, as per application, RZ18-07. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
That passes. Moving on to the next bill, 4635.
Bill Number 4635, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to C2, general commercial district, as per application, RZ18-08.
Okay. Does anybody on the council have any questions of the applicant or?
I do.
Okay. Would anybody specific?
I guess, I, I just, a word of caution, we're having trouble in counties, new homes in the county with septic systems on 3-acre lots with 1 family, okay? You've got about less than 2 acres, and this facility, I see 50 parking spots, going to be a lot of little kids probably doing what little kids do in the bathroom. So I'm concerned, to be frank with you, is this, is this, the, what that's, how well that septic system's going to work for that many people when we've got single-family homes that don't work on with twice as much ground? I've been told that a sewer line's on the other side of the road, but there's a territorial problem. Were you guys getting hooked to that? Is that correct? Okay. Why, why, they won't let you hook to that sewer line?
Correct.
I think that's pretty sad that the sewers, those sewer, both PW2 and Duckett Creek are here to serve the citizens and the, and the development of this county. If they've got a territorial dispute, I think that's a shame you guys are taking the butt into that, okay?
I agree. We're in, we are in Duckett Creek, and they do not have a sewer service that we can get into.
But right across the road from this property is a sewer line you could tap into if they would give you the blessing to do so. Is that correct?
It's not right across the road, but it is just a little ways north of the road.
Okay. My concern is, you know, and like in my district, okay, we're, I mean, 3-acre development tracks, people with septic systems with 1 family, and I'm in relatively new homes, and they're having trouble with septic already. I don't want to see these folks have that same problem down the road. So I don't know if there's anything we can do at the county level to help them get hooked on to sewer. I think it's an attractive building. I think those gymnastics facilities are really good for young kids. I think you've done a nice job in the landscaping. My concern is, what happens down the road if you put 50, 60 kids in there and they're all going to bathroom, and this septic system on an acre and a half of ground don't handle it? That's the concern I guess I have for you folks, okay?
And, and you do understand, we don't have any showers, we don't have any bathrooms other than, like, that you have in a home where people are taking baths and showers on, on a daily basis. We just have restroom facilities for the kids.
Would it be, would it be, would it be cost-effective for you guys? If you could get permission and run that line through, under that road, would it be cost-effective to do so?
I don't know. We'd have to see if we could get into it. And it's, I mean, we're in that, in the district that-
But PW2 said, no, they wouldn't let you tap on-
No, we're in Duckett. No. PW, they, they have told us, SD Number 2 have not told us that we can't tie into it, but we're not in their district.
Wow. Mr. Brazel?
Yeah, on the sewer system, it's, it's like a school district. You can't go outside. It's, it's an actual line, a territory on, because I had the same situation on, on another house where it was right across the street. So you can't go across there. It's like trying to go to a school district outside your school district. You just can't do it.
We've done it in my district that way. You mean, maybe the-
On the sewer line?
For instance, we've got PW2's got a little narrow, or Duckett Creek's got a little bit of narrow area north of St. Paul. Just a rural, one, one isolated little area. I just think those, 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 those 2 entities are crazy governmental agencies that are here to serve the sewerage needs of our, of our county so that we don't have septic, septic fields. And here we got a situation where we need a septic, we don't want a septic field, but they're having a political boundary dispute where they won't let you guys hook on. I think that's unfortunate.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not sure that's, I think the engineers and the county, community development, and Sandy Mae and all those folks are hired professionals to figure all that out with the engineers. I don't think that's our decision, but I understand your concerns. But here's the thing, I talked to Mr. Adams and Mr. Carroll, and I understand their concerns. I understand also that when you talk about the view of the place, you got a, you store a lot right across the street in a veterinary, you got a lot of commercial property in the area. So it's unfair to say that this is going to obstruct. I mean, you're on Highway N, which is a state highway, and the development is coming, it's all around there. Every piece of property across the street is commercial property. And so, what I'm trying to do is to see, okay, what makes the most sense? What makes the most sense for, for the people who live in the area, and also for the, the business owner and/or the people who own the property who are selling it? Because I understand the 3-acre lot thing, and we stick to that. If you're going to break a lot down, if it's more than 3, or 10 acres, or 20, or whatever, in unincorporated county, you have to have a 3-acre lot. I get it. But if it's an existing lot, if you're saying that you can't develop on that lot because it's not 3 acres, you're basically taking those person's land rights away from them and telling them that that property has no value. And that's my stickler. It's a constitutional thing. And so, I, I, I don't agree that we can tell this person that their, their lot has no value. Now, the gentleman who has this building, we talked about, Mr. Adams, you would ask them to flip it for you, and they did that. They'd spent all the engineering, they redesigned it. It seems to me that they were coming in good faith to you, so I, I'm a little confused why you're not happy with what you guys agreed to do. And I told you that outside. I thought, well, look, you guys had our gentleman's agreement. I don't know why you're going back on it now. And on Mr. Carroll's concerns, we talked about, well, let's see if we can get a berm around it and add some, some trees to the church. Can you, you, actually, it looks pretty good. You put quite a few trees in there, but you got the, the church side real thin on trees. Can you maybe double that up? On that, Doug, you got the, you got, for some reason, that's, that side has just got a lot less trees on it.
And, and we can add trees. I don't think that's a problem whatsoever.
Like, just put, put 1 in between each, each one of those dead spots. And how tall are these trees when you install them?
Greg Ansel with Echelon again. Those trees are typically in that, in that 10 to 12 out of the gate. The, the, the pines are going to be in that 6 to 8-foot range. So these are, these are some pretty good mass trees, and they're going to, they're going to get some girth to them to create some natural screening.
And so, Doug, how tall, we talked about the berm height. We talked about it being 2 feet. Is there, on that end there, can we get it on the church end? Because that's where the entry into the subdivision is. You've got quite a bit of green space there. Can we try to get some more height on that end?
I think we can. And, and I don't tip wrong on that.
We can look into, definitely, because the thing is, is you're trying to create a natural screen, but we also want to make sure that we're not making it look like a huge levee around the site.
No, I get it, but I mean, try to get like 4 feet out of it, rather than 2 feet.
Yes.
And I don't know on, where's Mike at? Is he here, or Robert?
Yeah, they're right there.
Who, do we put these conditions on this, or how, what do you? Like, for instance, like, we talked about, that's the other thing, Mr. Carroll, is we talked about, you, just, no, hold on a second. That, we talked about the metal building, and we changed that, they changed that too. Those were the biggest things. It was the, the screenings, the berm, and the, looking like a big metal pole barn. And so, they added, according to the owner, he said it's costing them an extra 75,000 to 100,000 to change the outside of it to make it look better. So with them saying that, do we have to add that into the conditions to make sure it's done, or is that just part of the record?
Well, at this stage, they're at the rezoning request stage. So the consideration here is whether this is the right place for commercial zoning. And if it's owned commercial, it could be used for the entire range of uses that are in this, in this district that are permitted by right, whether it's a indoor gymnastics facility or other uses that are permitted by right in the zoning district. So in other words, we're not at the site plan review stage, or this is not a conditional use permit. So typically, conditions aren't placed on simple rezonings, but-
No, I do understand that, Robert, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I'm just trying to say that if the neighbors are coming here spending time trying to get some stuff to it, how do we know? Is it just a gentleman's handshake, or we, or is it part of the record that if they're going to make the, if we go through all this process, you're saying that they can just make it a metal building anyway, and they don't need to put a berm? Is that, is that, or can we, how do we assure that that's going to get done? Do you guys see what I'm saying? I mean, what's the point?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I think, I think Roberts take, if you would, take notes on the things that we, that they've offered to do. We'd appreciate it if you'd make sure those get done on the site plan.
Well, you know, I think it's fundamentally go back, we had this discussion before, many of the cities in this county, Mike, you know, they do rezonings and preliminary site plan approvals at the same time. We don't. And I think it's a hell of a lot easier to do them both at the same time. That way, the people know what they're going to be getting when you approve a rezoning. So that'd be something we could look at as a fundamental change, how we do business. And if the cities do that, and Mr., Mr. Teeman, I think you're probably aware, a lot of the cities do that. Then there's no question about what was said and what wasn't said. So, and the other thing would be, I'm fine with this rezoning, I'm fine with this building, but if there's anything we could do if it, to make, if it makes economic sense for you guys to hook on the sewer, I'd like to see these folks have less problems down the road.
Yeah, I think you all have gone far and beyond what's required for the rezoning, and we greatly appreciate you working with the surrounding neighbors and providing us with this detail. It says a lot, and it looks like you're going to move forward with this project if you get it approved. Is there any other questions?
I'm, I'm aware of the other buildings that they referred to on, on Highway N, the other quote athletic buildings. And, and this one looks far better, okay? At least on the site plan. I mean, it really does than, than those. And again, part of it is the trees growing in and all the other kind of thing, but, you know, this is, this is, this is more impressive than what the other 2 facilities that they referred to.
Anybody else got any comments on this? Are you?
I, I guess Mr. Carroll wants to make a comment, but Mr. Carroll, just stick to what, you know, stick just to the zoning. I mean, you know.
You, you claim that there is commercial property all the way, all down Highway N. If I'm not mistaken, you all failed Keven's boat and RV storage. You did not pass that.
Across the street's a city, it's not county. Across the street-
No, that was unincorporated. Well, and then they voluntarily went into Lake St. Louis. You know, we fought-
Mr. Keven's property are you talking about?
Do what?
Mr. Keven's property?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that was turned down, and then they voluntarily went into Lake St. Louis. You know, that's how they got that there. That was not there before. You know, there was no commercial property there until they put, until they joined into Lake St. Louis. You know, and then, like I said, the Duckett Creek, I call Duckett Creek, and they said seven to 10 years before there will be sewers on that side of the highway. Minimum, seven to 10.
Okay.
Okay. And I don't know if there was ever a conversation between Duckett Creek and the other sewer district that if anybody even approached them about providing sewers for this building. But I think that needs to be done, if it's a possibility. Because I don't know that those districts are etched in stone as much as you might think. But it's worth checking into and seeing if we can get that on sewer instead of the septic system. But I have a lot of faith in our staff, that they can come up with something that's going to work there. Because there's a lot of new technology that we didn't have 10 years ago to help treat these, treat sewage from projects like this.
Do you know, Robert, what the rule is on that, on septic tanks when they're that close? Sewer, do they cross lines, or how's that work?
I'm not familiar with sewer service crossing the jurisdictional boundary. I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but I'm not aware of that happening.
Well, I know what's happened in the past, but I don't know how. That was quite a few years ago, so I don't know how many changes have taken place since then. But it's worth, it's worth at least looking into.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
And here's the thing, if we just do the approved, the rezoning now, you've got time for the site plan and final sign to try to fork out the sewer. I see by your plans about 400 foot of lateral, and that's like minimal for a normal residential home. So if there's a way you can hook on to that sewer on the other side of N, it may save you money, and it sure as hell probably save you a lot of headaches down the road.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. We need to read this again, don't we?
Yes. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to C2 General Commercial District as per application RZ 18-08. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to Bill 4636.
Bill number 4636, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute a grant agreement and funding approval with the State Emergency Management Agency, SEMA, for a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to fund 100% of the projected total costs of acquiring and demolishing two residential structures, sustaining severe and repetitive loss in flood hazard zones of unincorporated St. Charles County.
Any comments or questions on this bill?
I have a comment, and Mike, you may know this, but who's this following? Are you, Mike? Is this your department? I've heard people complain about when they tear these buildings down, that they don't get all the debris, and they leave them in, and there's concrete and debris and weeds, and that they don't do a real good job of cleaning these structures up after they tear them down. I don't know how much truth is it at, but I've heard that multiple times. Does somebody go out and inspect it after they tear a building down and remove it? Does someone go out and inspect before you issue final payment?
Yes. So as part of the contract, they have to be, obviously, remove all the structure, all the issues. It's a nuisance abatement is what it is. So they're cleaning up the site to get rid of those items, those issues. So we will ensure that that's being done properly according to the contract.
Might have been before your time. So just, yeah, just make sure that they get all the stuff cleaned up. I mean, because, I don't know, Mike, is that, can you hear that? Is that?
I haven't heard that on any that we've done the cleanup on. I've seen that happen on the private side when they take down a building, that it doesn't necessarily get all the way removed, but.
Maybe that's what it is, and they don't know the difference.
Right.
One question for Mike.
Yes.
Who maintains the property after they're demolished?
So the county takes ownership. It's a facilities maintenance.
Pardon me?
Facilities Department.
Okay.
Well, is there, so we got to mow it and everything? Do we mow it?
Yes.
Can't we lease it to somebody next door so to let them mow it?
That happens, yes. There's quite a few properties, especially in the flood plain, that are owned by adjacent ownership.
Or leased, yeah. That seems like a lot of expense that we don't need.
Yeah, it looks like it'd be more practical in the future if we would try to turn them back into a natural state by planting trees and natural forbs on it, then we wouldn't have to maintain them.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, please read and call a roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute a grant agreement with, and funding approval with the State Emergency Management Agency, SEMA, for a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to fund 100% of the projected total costs of acquiring and demolishing two residential structures, sustaining severe and repetitive loss in flood hazard zones of unincorporated St. Charles County. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes. That bill passes. Move on to Bill 4637.
Bill number 4637, an ordinance amending Section 505.040 of Chapter 500 Building Codes and County Building Commission, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, to provide for permit and inspection fee waivers for construction or retrofitting activities of homes of members of the United States Military and first responders who are disabled in the line of duty.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, please read and call a roll.
An ordinance amending Section 505.040 of Chapter 500 Building Codes and County Building Commission, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, to provide for permit and inspection fee waivers for construction or retrofitting activities of homes of members of the United States Military and first responders who are disabled in the line of duty. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to Bill 4638.
Bill number 4638, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's State Block Grant Agreement, Amendment Number Two Airport Improvement Program Grant Project 16-111A-1, and accepting said grant in the amount of $268,721 for design and construction of apron rehabilitation at Smart Field Airport.
Yes, I'd like to amend Bill Number 4638, replace it with substitute Bill 4638.
Second. You got a motion and a section? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That carries. Any comments or questions about substitute Bill 4638? Hearing none, please read and call a roll.
Substitute Bill Number 4638, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's State Block Grant Agreement, Amendment Number Two Airport Improvement Program Grant Project 16-111A-1, and accepting said grant in the amount of $268,721 for design and construction of apron rehabilitation at Smart Field Airport, and further amending Ordinance 17-113 by providing related supplemental appropriations to the budget of the airport fund. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to Bill 4639.
Bill Number 4639, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute award letters, awarded agency contracts, and property transfer documents from the Missouri Police Chiefs Charitable Foundation, MPCCF, for receipt of equipment from the Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Program under the management of the MPCCF.
Is there any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, please read and call a roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute award letters, awarded agency contracts, and property transfer documents from the Missouri Police Chiefs Charitable Foundation, MPCCF, for receipt of equipment from the Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Program under the management of the MPCCF. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to Bill 4640.
Bill Number 4640, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted by Ordinance 17-113 for positions within the St. Charles County Facilities Management Department.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, please read and call a roll.
An ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted by Ordinance 17-113 for positions within the St. Charles County Facilities Management Department. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to Bill 4641.
Bill Number 4641, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a program services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for enhanced opioid surveillance toxicology testing reimbursement.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, please read and call a roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a program services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for enhanced opioid surveillance toxicology testing reimbursement. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
That bill passes. Next bill, 4642.
Bill Number 4642, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted by Ordinance 17-113 to add one sergeant pay grade 210 within the Cybercrime Unit Bureau of Criminal Investigation, St. Charles County Police Department.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, please read and call a roll.
An ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted by Ordinance 17-113 to add one sergeant pay grade 210 within the Cybercrime Unit Bureau of Criminal Investigation, St. Charles County Police Department. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
That bill passes. Next bill is 4643.
Bill Number 4643, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2018.
Any comments or questions on this? Hearing none, please read and call a roll.
An ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2018. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes. That bill passes. Next, we'll move on to bills for introduction. The first bill is 4644.
Bill Number 4644, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by John White, an ordinance vacating a portion of Old South River Road pursuant to Section 71.280, RSMO, subject to and reserving utility easements.
Any questions on this bill? Hearing none, we'll move on to Bill 4645.
Bill Number 4645, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a CMAQ program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Green Light Program Phase Six, Federal Project CMAQ-5414634.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none. Let's move on to Bill 4646.
Bill Number 4646, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a CMAQ program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Route 94 roadway and signal improvements, Federal Project CMAQ-5414635.
Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to Bill 4647.
Bill Number 4647, requested by Ruth Rollins and Bob Schnur, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the personnel administration plan adopted by Ordinance 17-110, including but not limited to benefits, and amending the 2018 budget adopted by Ordinance 17-113 for positions within the St. Charles County Department of Corrections.
Is there any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none. Let's move on to Bill 4648.
Bill Number 4648, requested by Mary Kayes, MD, and Bob Schnur, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance accepting a grant and amending the 2018 budget adopted by Ordinance 17-113 to fund one death investigator pay grade 204 and to expand the part-time clerical to full-time by adding a government service representative to pay grade 113 within the office of the Regional Medical Examiner, both actions as funded by a grant.
Have we received this grant in previous years?
We have not. So when we were in our previous situation with a contractor, the grant was offered to the contractor a number of times, and they didn't want to go through the paperwork for it, as I understand. So when we became aware of it, it had been a missed opportunity. We did apply for it this year.
Wonderful. Sounds great. Anybody else have any questions about this bill?
I'm all thrilled with this bill.
Yeah, one quick question on it. Is the grant a one-time grant? Or I'm always questioned whether, when we hire people and it's funded with a grant, how long does that grant last?
So it's three, they'd make awards in a yearly, but they gave us three one-year grants.
Okay.
It is renewable so long as we're meeting the data requirements. Because obviously, what they're really interested in is that tissue and organs that can be harvested to save people's lives are actually being processed quickly enough to get to people and be able to do that.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, let's move on to Bill 4649.
And this is less than three pages, so I'll have to read the bill.
Okay.
Bill Number 4649, requested by Dr. Mary Kayes, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute an autopsy services contract with the Missouri Department of Social Services for child death autopsy services. Whereas the Missouri Department of Social Services has provided an autopsy services contract to the St. Charles County Office of the Regional Medical Examiner for child death autopsy services. And whereas the autopsy services contract between the Missouri Department of Social Services and St. Charles County Office of the Regional Medical Examiner provides for payments to the Regional Medical Examiner for child death autopsies performed in an amount up to $2,000 per autopsy. And whereas the autopsy services contract outlines the duties of the Missouri Department of Social Services and St. Charles County Office of the Regional Medical Examiner, and whereas it is in the public interest for the St. Charles County Office of the Regional Medical Examiner to participate in the autopsy services contract to receive assistance for the residents of St. Charles County. And whereas Chapter 70, Revised Statutes of Missouri, authorizes intergovernmental agreements between political subdivisions for the purposes herein set out. Now therefore, be it ordained by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the county executive or his designate is hereby authorized to execute the autopsy services contract with the Missouri Department of Social Services related to contract AOC. Section two, the autopsy services contract shall be substantially the same in form and content as that attached heretofore as Exhibit A. Section three, compliance with all the terms of the autopsy services contract shall be the responsibility of the St. Charles County Office of the Regional Medical Examiner. Section four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval, and such contract amendment authorized herein
amendment authorized herein shall be valid upon its execution as required by chapter seventy of the revised statutes of Missouri.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to bill forty-six fifty.
Bill number forty-six fifty, requested by Steve Almond, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance setting the two thousand and nineteen rates for group medical insurance benefits with Aetna Life Insurance Company, Davis Vision, and self-insured dental insurance benefits for county employees, elected officials, and retirees.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to bill forty-six fifty-one.
Bill number forty-six fifty-one, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Michael Elam, an ordinance authorizing two agreements relating to St. Charles County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant Program or Urban County CDBG Program for two thousand seventeen through two thousand and nineteen, namely, a program administration agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Charles for the city's operation of the urban county's two thousand and eighteen CDBG programs and services, and a subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Charles for the city's operation of the city's two thousand and eighteen CDBG programs and services.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to bill forty-six fifty-two.
Bill number forty-six fifty-two, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to St. Charles County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant Program or Urban County CDBG Program for two thousand seventeen through two thousand and nineteen, namely, a two thousand and eighteen subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Peters for the city's operation of the city's CDBG programs and services.
Any comments or questions on that bill? Hearing none, we'll move on to, uh, announcements and miscellaneous.
Mr. Chairman, I have one announcement. Uh, East West Gateway is hosting an open house on this Wednesday between four-thirty and six-thirty at the O'Fallon City Hall. Residents can provide comments on road improvements being added to the region's transportation plan, including the exit ramp at three ninety, uh, three sixty-four and Hardee's Crossing. This would be a ramp that's been needed for years, and, and people who really desire and have an opportunity to express their wishes at this meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Oktoberfest is this coming weekend, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, so.
Okay.
Only in St. Charles do they have Oktoberfest in September.
Well, no, I think a lot of people-
No, in Munich, where it comes from, it starts in September also.
We're leading the way.
Yeah.
And also, like, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate, uh, Chief Todd on a great open house at the, uh, department, at the EOC on Saturday, and, uh, Ryan's not here, so I congratulate John on the, uh, the, what is it, the-
Disc golf.
Disc golf tournament. How many people do we have?
Uh, they had over four hundred people attend, and, and a hundred and forty-two actually play that day.
That's the disc golf out at the, uh, New Melly Lakes.
Wow, that's great.
And that was the max that could play.
That's the max that could play.
They didn't have enough room.
Sold out within, uh, I think, the first week, uh, we had opened for tickets.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to mention, uh, the creation of the, uh, an organized, uh, transportation district that's, uh, set for December, or, I'm sorry, June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, is there anybody else that'd like to talk about that, or could want to shed a little more light on these, uh, on these transportation development districts? Is that some-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just again, as we all know, but just for the sake of the folks at home, we're not, you're not blessing this or agreeing with it, this is just a requirement in the statute. When somebody else does it, we put it on our agenda so the public can find out about it.
Okay, so if you're interested in that, that's June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Two thousand and eighteen? We missed it.
September fourth, not June.
I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong line.
No, you're not. It's, it's actually an order that came from the court, and that's the date of the order, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, the council dates are changed in December, Dave, from twelve-
October, too.
Twelve, twelve-three and twelve-seventeen, and also in October, right? On Tuesday.
Huh? Is that right, Donald?
They're not changed for October and November, it's just that the holiday is the, the second Monday for both of those months happened to be a, a holiday that is observed by the county, so it pushes your first meeting of the month to Tuesday.
I see.
For both October and November.
First meeting in October is gonna be on October ninth, and the first meeting is a, which is a Tuesday, and the first meeting in November will be Tuesday, November thirteenth. And then we're also moving the December meetings, as we do every year, to the first and the third, instead of the second and the last, so that we can pass the budget, and the county executive has the ten days in which to review the budget and make his-
We're gonna get Christmas.
Opinion, though.
We're not meeting during Christmas, we carry.
There's that, too.
So, any other announcements? Hearing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, sorry, John.
I would like to say that, uh, New Melly Park, the soft opening is a Saturday, so, uh, we had the golf tournament last weekend, but the public's invited to come out Saturday, um, I believe at eleven. Uh, there'll be park staff out there doing fishing demonstrations, there'll be events on the lake. Come out, enjoy the park, and, um, and have, hopefully, it's a beautiful weekend party.
Great, great. Hearing no more, can-
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.